Okay, this is the Select Board meeting for Monday, October 25th, 2021 at 6 o'clock at Town Hall. Those in attendance are Mr. Beatty, Mr. Fox, Mr. Moblin, Mr. Steinhardt, Selectment Administrative Assistant, Robin Solak, and Jim Middle.
I have the pledge of allegiance. Sandy Brown, can you lead us off on that?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first off, folks, we'll start with public comment. We'll start with the first row. If anyone would like to say anything, please say your name and address. Thank you. Yeah, Michelle.
Michelle Pratt, 152 Berkshire Ave. The last meeting, I primarily focused on the mass general law violations regarding the Constitution Commission. But tonight I want to talk about agricultural. So again, I'm calling again on you to reinstate Marissa Cook-Overgon and Dennis Clark as they were wrongfully removed without notice, therefore denied their opportunity for public hearing. In terms of violations of national law as they relate to the Agricultural Commission, maybe to you directly from the state website. I found out recently, which I was kind of surprised by, I went to kind of look back at some meeting minutes and things like that. There are actually no meeting minutes for a couple of years. So I inquired as to why that was. And I was told that there was no money for a secretary or someone to be able to do that. So in Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8 L.D., it says that the commission could appoint a chair, clerk, or consultant. And in E, it says that the commission needs to keep accurate records of its meetings and actions and file with the annual report. But I guess they weren't able to do that without money appropriated for that. Under F, a majority of members shall be farmers or employed in agriculture-related fields. If farmers or persons employed in agriculture are unavailable to serve, then it should include a majority of members with knowledge and experience in agricultural practices or knowledge of related agricultural business. So that's an important point. I'll get back to it in a second. These terms are also supposed to be for three years. And as I talked about last meeting, the terms aren't for three years. They haven't been for three years. The only time you're supposed to be staggered is in the very beginning when the commission is first generated. So in the next paragraph, it talks about the fact that in a town, if members of the commission that are, will be appointed after a public hearing by the Board of Selectment. Didn't happen. Okay. So these are huge issues that we're still not really hearing any, you know, kind of an answer or any of our solution for that we're real upset about. So we need to see some changes in that area. So not only were the legal processes circumvented, but as I mentioned, a point I was going to get back to, there were two people that have been associate members such that I understand it. Again, if I'm wrong, you definitely hopefully correct me. There are two people that were associate members. They've been attending these meetings for over two years, as far as I know. They were not appointed to do so positions. So somebody was handpicked from the community who I actually happen to be quite fond of. So it doesn't have anything to do with who this person is. But he never has even attended an agricultural commission meeting, to my knowledge, and he's not a farmer. So I'm hard pressed to figure out how he got on there, went to associate members who've been, you know, going, participating, listening, learning for over two years, did not get on there. And I believe there's also still an open position. I could be wrong about that. I believe there's an open position. Also, I think that Sage Fury has put in an application and he was not selected either. And there might be an open position still. So it's hard to figure out, but the only conclusion I can really draw, I know that one of these gentlemen ran against you, Russ, for a select board. I also know the other one came out against the Carvana project. And the other applicant Sage had also not been selected and he was openly against Carvana. So it's really hard for us. And because we never heard from you guys in open meeting about why these people were selected, it leaves us to like draw our own conclusions, right? The brain wants to like fill in the blanks. So it's hard to decide without the facts being presented in front of us. So basically, the Agricultural Commission still hasn't been notified that there's a new commissioner. The person who was appointed to the Agricultural Commission hasn't been notified that he was appointed. And it's been a month. Not sure what's going on with that. But it would be really good for them to know that, I think, so that they can pick up the business and do the things that they're actually supposed to do. So I guess I have a really big concern about if this was repercussions regarding people's advocacy for the Carvana project, actually against the Carvana project. If these people are being blocked from their political ambitions and being blocked from being able to volunteer in town, it is a clear violation of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. And we're not okay with that. So again, I said I was only going to state facts that I've actually researched and I'm going to stay true to that tonight. Last meeting, I think I stated something that you guys hadn't advertised publicly about boards and commission positions that were coming up. So tonight I'm going to correct myself in public. I was wrong about that. You guys did advertise for the four positions that were going to be coming up. So I'm going to read to you. The Southwick Republican Town Committee. Hi, everyone. Please join us this Thursday at the South of Town Hall in the Land Use Room for an upcoming meeting on current events in town. There are several open seats on various committees that need to be filled. I guess only by Republicans. Because I contacted the Chair of the Democratic Committee in Southwick. They didn't know anything about any open positions on boards or committees. Again, you owe this town an explanation as to how in the world that could happen. Really haven't figured out exactly which laws that violates, but I definitely will. And the state will also then maybe see it's my ethics complaint. Thank you.
Anyone else in Row One? Row Two?
I think you all were wrong. I've been spoken with the commission, been told, convicted, left E. When I am going to say morally, you are wrong. You are devoid of any integrity because I don't understand how you can just ignore laws and do whatever you want. And it's not going to keep on going with pledge allegiance to the flag, with liberty and justice for all, or justice for those people. If you think I'm going to stop, I'll be here till I'm 82.
Anyone else in Row Two? Row Three?
Good evening, Marissa Cook-Overgon, 126 South Moon Street. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. So today marks four days since, or four days, four weeks since the Select Board meeting where a few members were summarily removed with surgical precision from their commissions. And since then, there have been a few Select Board meetings, public comments have been made. Some commissioners have also voiced their concerns formally, asking for explanations as to what is this new direction? So it's going to be a month, really, and there has not been any explanation yet. What is this new direction? Last week, you've heard several members of the audience extending in all of the, a bridge to communicate, to have some sort of dialogue, and forcing you to please take that offer from the people of the town to speak with us, dialogue with us. And that has not yet happened. That hasn't happened in a formal capacity and it must have in a capacity, in a public capacity, in an open way. You think of the meeting format that's going to be worthwhile for this. You are the leaders of the town. What sort of format is it going to take for us to have a direct and honest conversation? Because I can't imagine that week after week, you're going to look forward to comments like these. It must be getting exhausted. We are exhausted too. I mean, right now, the silence is speaking volumes, gentlemen. And honestly, like Michelle said, people can extrapolate a lot of things from that silence and that's how misinformation can happen as well. So please do consider what sort of format we can have going forward for some sort of dialogue and open communication where you can actually respond to us. I realize that the structure of this public comment does not allow that. So what kind of structure is it going to take so that we can have a conversation that's both ways? Because right now, it looks like, in fact, the fact that you have not answered any of these questions that people have subjected or submitted, it looks like you're trying to obfuscate something, which I hope isn't the case. Or it looks like you're trying to squash a set, which I hope isn't the case. So what exactly is it? Because people are starting to really question what exactly is going on. Four weeks, no response. What is it? Seriously? So I really hope that you're taking these words and internalizing them and you're actually going to come up with some end result. Because we're not going to forget about this. We're going to keep coming to the meetings and forcing you to please find some sort of way to dialogue with us. Because this is not going to be swept under the rug. We're not going to forget about it. Hope that's not the strategy. So please, give us some sort of response, dialogue with us. Thank you.
Anyone else in Row Three? Row Four? Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised. Joanne says she can't hear very well. Joanne, can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, but I couldn't hear the second person at all that was speaking because she didn't step up to the front.
Okay, thank you.
Cynthia Ramiro, Randall Road.
So she's not going to hear it from there either?
I know, I don't want anything down. I look at your faces and it comes out. Cynthia Ramiro, Randall Road.
Can you hear her?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
I am disgusted with your actions in the last year. And it's more than that because it was all hidden behind you. You're disrespectful to us. You don't answer any questions. You don't listen to anybody. We didn't want Carvana. Too bad. That is the way it was. You have not given justice to these people that you removed illegally. You broke laws and you've got nothing to say about it. And I will be here until I'm 82 or longer if you don't fix this. And I'll be saying the same thing over and over again, and I won't give up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone on Zoom have any public comments this evening? Please use the raise your hand feature.
Okay. So the knowledge payable warrant 221, we will be dated 10/19/2021. The amount of 300,211.
3 million dollars, sir. The school assessment is almost 2.9 million.
Thank you. 3 million, 211,181.41. Minutes dated 10/18/2021. Russ Fox will make that motion to approve.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
Are those in favor? Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Okay. Accept amended minutes for August 9th, 2021, Select Board Meeting. Russ Fox will make that motion.
Do you have the clarity around what the change was, the motion to the minutes?
It was the vote for the high-speed internet. You had made the motion. And I had it. That was Russ made the motion.
Right, that was pointed out in one of the open meeting law complaints. So that's part of the process to go forward and address it. That's being addressed now.
Okay.
There's one other change just below that. And I'll, I think I said it during the meeting. I believe Harry Cocksha has moved out of town. So I moved not to reappoint him based on that he left town, sold his house, left. So as far as I understand, I believe it's Chris Boyd, Alicia Sullivan, Caitlin Hazelton, Marlene Quinn, Johnson, and it says Johnson and myself. I think, I don't know if recall Mr. Johnson's first name. But these were all people, I believe, that were on said committee prior. Okay, if I'm, and if I'm wrong, I believe those are all from previous appointees to that, so advisory submissions. I'll make that motion with that amendment. I'll second the motion as amended.
All right. Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Thank you. Ribbon cutting salon saga, salon sign. November 1st, 2021 at 11:00 a.m. Can anyone attend that? Sage, is it Salon Sage?
Yeah, it's next to Zan's.
What day of the week is that?
That is a Monday.
Monday? Next Monday morning at 11:00 a.m.
I can, I should be able to get there.
If you run into a problem, because I know you've got some.
No, that actually be okay.
Okay.
So next up is Southwick Civic Fund regarding December 11th, 2021. So I'll extend myself as Chair, because that's who I am and the meeting is all yours. All right, so do I have to walk out there?
No, you've got a bad leg. Stay right there.
Thank you. Any objection?
I mean, because I don't stand. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. All right, so this is on the agenda. Two years ago, we did a Christmas program, a holiday program here. We had the vendors inside. We had the Christmas trees out front for the month of December and so on and so on. So we'd like to bring that back. I talked to Board of Health and she was okay with the inside crafts fair. That's pretty much it. If you want to have a festive this December, the Civic Fund will bring it back. And if you don't, that's fine too.
I think that was one of the most outstanding things.
The school band said they would march again and do the Christmas carols.
That kind of kicked off the 250 celebration.
It did, yeah.
Prior to the events on December 31st. So it was well attended. I think we made a few suggestions about lighting to the back for additional parking. And I think maybe we could work with the fire department for the extra lights.
Yeah.
Because we did run into a parking issue. So maybe we, oh, we got both teeth here. Maybe we can coordinate something. But I would be happy to accept the motion to approve this.
So move, Doug Morgan.
Russ Fox will second it. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Mr. Chairman. And it's not just Christmas. It's a holiday. I want to reach out to a dear old friend of mine who tortures me over this program every year and see if he would like to do the Hanukkah version of it because I don't know much about it. But we'll see what the old doctor has to say. So thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so now I'm back as chairman. Approved Klein Road Culvert Design Permit Contract Tie-In Bond, $80,000. Randy, which culvert is that on Klein? Is it the bottom of the hill?
There's two culverts on Klein. This is a smaller of the two. It's closest to South Looma Street. It's about 500 feet. So there's a culvert that's aged, deteriorated. It's such a personal culvert. So it's actually sticking out of the ground down by Albatza. So we've got to grant it through Mass DER for designs and permitting for pay services. It's like they use that to hire consultants to design and permit that project. And they'll be ready for a summer rate project, ready for some point number.
Correct. How many do we have on the shelf now? Just one, I think? One or two?
We can always add more.
No, no, absolutely, but.
Yeah, we're tech, we're tech.
Right, we're getting close. Yeah. And the funds are there for this?
The funds are there for the design.
Yes.
All the great, 100% grant funds, $80,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so the construction will be another story in some way.
Yep, understood. Any questions?
No.
Doug?
No questions.
I need a motion.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve.
Doug Morgan will second.
Are those in favor? Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Thank you. Okay, new business. Mr. Steinhardt?
We have a request here from the Fire Chief to approve a provisional EMP, David Duke Chan. And so that's on your agenda here. Chief, you want to just go over that? He's recommended.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sure. As part of the contract, there was a request to go to 24-hour shifts in our staffing levels at the time of the contract in July. We're getting closer to that, although we've got a couple holes. We have a new hole as of this morning. Morgan and your Senator application. She's got to send through her job. She's unable to fall away out of the physical ability test. So they'd already given her an extra month or two and we've given them November 1st deadline. And this morning she contacted us. She got injured and unable to complete the pack. So we've drawn her application, which, you know, we can look at her BM as she gets better and stuff like that, maybe down the road. We're in the process of advertising and reviewing, interviewing, future applicants. What this does is bring David Duke Chan on. He's been on for years. He's medical. He's going to medical school, but not until probably fall of next year. So he has some time that you might commit to the department and fill all those 24-hour shifts on a regular basis. I think he'd work out great. Give us six months to a year as we start to balance these different medics and whatnot. And I'll also tell you, we lose Morgan, but George Patson, I guess, so he's passed. Like that whole program, just wait for his certificate.
Wonderful.
That one step forward, two steps back. So anyways, what's the plan tonight?
Oh, yeah, we just need to send him for a physical if it's leaving at the AT and looks at that.
But he's still named after him.
Well, we can determine that with later council. See, I mean, he's already been on board, so it might be a transfer, but we need to clarify that with council.
Any questions, Doug?
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve pending all, meaning all qualifications.
Doug Morgan will second.
Are those in favor? Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
And I have the long packet in front of me, folks. That's why I feel like it's new business. School roundtable. Yeah, but what is it? STGRS?
Southwood Town and Granville Regional School District.
Budget Roundtable, Thursday, December 2nd, 2021 at 5:30. I'm assuming it's at the school.
Yeah, they want to have it at their little table. Potter Mill Library.
Oh, really?
Bigger room.
Bigger room.
Want a bigger room.
Wonderful.
So they're floating this out to all the member communities of which Granville, Town, and Southwick.
And that date is what, December 2nd?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Open your eyes up, Joe. Okay. So it's just information for now?
Yep, an invitation.
You want the case in that week?
Nope.
You're around?
God willing.
I understand that. All right. Thank you. Accept canine donation, 150, from Joyce Arnold.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Morgan will second with our thanks.
Yes. Are those in favor? Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
All right, now I see new business. Mr. Steinhardt?
No, I vouch for old business.
Okay.
Unless, the chief did just give us an invitation to fire associates.
Yes, he did.
For Saturday, November 6th.
Yep. You and your guest, I get to bring somebody, are cordially invited to the 2021 Southwood Farmers Association banquet. The banquet will take place November 6th, 2021, and will be held at the Brass Rail Banquet Hall. We will begin at 5:00 p.m. and continue till 9:30 with dinner being served at 6:00. This will be a Class A formal event for department members and requested to wear a coat, tie, or a dress for non-department members.
We're still deciding.
We're deciding. Yeah, I'm not quite sure I'm going with that.
Don't flash.
Look forward to seeing.
Sweater contest that night?
No.
No, this isn't even the Christmas thing, is it? This is.
It's not the Christmas thing. Should have decided, because we haven't had anything for a year and a half, that they would go back to the formal banquet.
Nice.
Do the awards at this.
Okay, this replaces it. Respectfully, the banquet committee slash, I think, Brian Snyder. Okay, anything else for new business? That's it.
Sure. The only thing I wanted to talk about is we've now gone to quarterly tax billing. And I know the town clerk sent out the first quarter and now everybody has this little envelope. Hopefully they haven't.
Thrown it out.
Thrown it out or forgot about it. But I was wondering how we could promote this since this is the first time. It's due November 1st. We have a week to kind of promote this thing. I was going to suggest the town crier asking the DPW to put something, maybe at the transfer station on their board down there.
So do they get fined if it's late?
It's 14% interest back to the 30 days, so.
November 1st due date, one?
Yeah. So it's a serious, serious penalty if you forget.
And Mr. Vice.
And it cannot be waived.
Mr. Vice Chairman, just so you know, while we were starting the meeting during the public comment, there was a robo-call that was sent out from the Tax Collector's Office with a friendly reminder that the second quarter taxes are due by one day.
I figured she was going to be doing something.
So he brought it up.
God bless.
Everybody's rolling off around 6:08. That's what it was.
6:05. But if we could do anything else.
Absolutely.
And maybe the news media will pick up on.
Yeah, we can put something on the town crier.
Right. Yeah. Any others? That's enough. Any new business, sir?
I got one. So as part of our work to encourage boards and commissions to do a hybrid meeting wherever possible and appreciate the boards and commissions that have been working to enable that, there was an excellent question raised by a member of the Board of Health, which we went back to town council because it was food for thought. In the past, if we had inclement weather and town hall closed, any meeting was automatically canceled. During COVID, we didn't have to cancel a single meeting because of the weather, because we're all stuck at home. We are going to amend the language and offer language to boards and commissions to be able to post hybrid meetings with the ability to pivot. So if we have a snow event or a weather event that necessitates the closure of town hall, it will be okay to conduct the meeting via Zoom that night. We're going to work with town council to get that language posted. They thought it was a good idea. There's other communities that's been on a listserv that have talked about it and how that would work. So we're just going to continue to push that on with the attorney to get the language to all the boards and commissions to amend their meeting postings for hybrids. That was my business for tonight, sir.
Wonderful. I have known as business. All right, old business. Mr. Steinhardt?
Let's see. We're continuing to, with a few buildings and grounds supervisor candidates this week. We had already conducted some of them with the selection panel, which is a team of department heads that have relevant connection to that position. And at some point, our hope is to bring forward a pool of candidates to the Select Board. Okay, next item, under the previous board meetings, where we've had discussions with an appropriation that had gone to the town clerk's office for developing the onboarding software of tracking different people who are on different boards, committees, and what their tenures are and their durations. That is something that is being finished in draft form. I reviewed it with the town clerk, treasurer, collector today. And at some point, that's also going to have to be verified with the town attorney to see if the issues relating to our town code, bylaws, and local acceptances of different laws and statutes created certain boards will be consistent with what her research is showing. So that process is developing. It's coming a long way. And that may also go toward helping to resolve some of the issues that have come before you in public comments, issues relating to the appointment of people to boards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sir.
All right, so I have here appointments for town boards, committees, ad hoc high-speed internet cable advisory. Am I understanding, are we going to hold off on that still because we got to wait? Okay. Am I understanding, are we going to hold off on that still because we got to wait? Okay. Then Board Master Plan Committee, we discussed that last week. That was all set with authority.
Yep, we went from fifteen seventeen. Want to remove that?
What's that? Yeah, we could, yeah, yeah. North Pond Land Wetman Damage Site Tour and Review.
Yep, that's going to be happening tomorrow. We have state agencies coming in to meet the town boards and departments that have jurisdiction over that issue.
Okay. The M I I A Trade Show, January twenty-first and twenty-second.
Maya and Ian and.
Make it, make sure you tell someone. Approve town voting precinct boundaries.
Right, that is something you had asked to.
Yeah.
Postpone, so that isn't here.
But we have to do, we do have to make a decision on that, apparently.
Right, so she did send you the new one.
Did the state finalize their decision process around that?
This is a separate issue of the reprecinct thing for our issue, separate than the senatorial one. So this is something the show needs to sign up.
But is it?
About our precinct.
I understand that, but I thought from our conversation with Michelle last week that there was a modicum of risk, albeit low, that if we accepted the priest, new precinct thing, that it would be possible if this, the Senate or the House passed legislation to establish the new boundaries, that perhaps a district could be in a different, a precinct could be in a different district than another.
Right, you were going to hold off for a week.
Correct, so that was my question to you was.
Nothing, I've never seen anything new from her on the issue. I think the boundaries are things for our reprecincting that they're looking to give for us. That's on your not the senatorial or House.
Correct, the.
I defer, no matter what. Because I think this is a chicken and egg situation.
No matter what we do, they're going to do what they want anyways.
Basically, like, they've pretty much have already told us the Senate District and the House District, pretty much have been established. I think it's just a.
Well, we did convey, you took a word last week on that other separate matter opposing it. We did register that with the co-chairman of the committees at the state legislature who are in charge of doing that program. So they know in no uncertain terms what your vote was and why you took it.
Didn't change the opinion, no.
Well, we haven't heard that. I think that one, they still have time.
I have no idea, to be quite honest with you.
But I think for Michelle's, for us, I think we might as well just go forward. So I'll make that a form of a motion so that she can establish our precinct. We have elections coming in a minute, so.
Well, you have your map from her, whatever. It's just a neighborhood shift.
Right, correct. I was just more concerned with the discussion we had last week. I don't see it happening with Southwick being the size population we are, but it is happening in Agawam and Westfield, that they're actually going to be split district of precinct by precinct to different state reps. I don't see it happening with us. I'll second the motion. But I, I continue to raise the object. I'm just saying.
I wouldn't put it past them.
Nope.
No, not one bit.
Not with, not with the way the current makeup of of the state houses.
Right. So motion was made, seconded, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye, and I have the original for signature. I'll clerk it down here.
Thank you. Russ Fox, anything else for old business?
Not tonight.
Mr. Mogul? And you're also with old business, Paul, right?
Yes, I.
Yep. I just took you off. All right, so that concludes the meeting tonight. We are going to go in executive session to not reconvene. I'll see, let's go in executive session person to M G L Chapter C thirty A S twenty-one dash two and three, Chapter two and four, Section one B, and C M R twenty point oh three dash one B. Non-union staff, dispatch unit, and clerical unit, strategy, collective bargaining, and litigation. Labor Council, Fire Chief, and Police Chief, Executive Section Regarding M G L Chapter C thirty A dash S twenty-one, dash two and three, Chapter two one four, Section one B, and C M R twenty point oh three dash one and B. Non-union staff, clerical unit, dispatch, strategy, collective bargaining, and litigation. Two, new executive session to conduct strategy sessions, preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to not reconvene an open session. New executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel to not reconvene an open session. Executive session discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. New executive session discuss strategy with respect to potential threat and litigation, and that the charity bear that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. A person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, and serious interference with their privacy. Superior court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Joe DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
That's it, folks. Have a good night. We will see you next week.